I think some members have some questions about the money, what we could spend it on and what we couldn't spend it on. So I'll just open the floor for whoever's got questions to it and I think Donna had some.
Ashley, it's not a, it's not a bond that we can pay straight back, right? You can't just give it back.
That's right.
Am I right about that?
Right, you can, it's a, has what's called a ten-year call provision, so yours is issued in two thousand seventeen, so I believe in two thousand twenty-seven, you can pay it off, pay, you know, call it in.
So it takes ten years.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
You can, you can escrow the funds from now until two thousand twenty-seven, but it costs a lot of money to do that.
Do that, yeah.
You can defeat what they call defeats it, but the cost of doing that is prohibitive, I think, in terms of what you're looking at.
Okay. What about what can we spend that on?
Okay, so under your resolution, when you all issued the bonds, the, um, the original resolution governs how the proceeds can be used, so let me, if you could be distant, I'll pull that up.
Which I'm never seeing.
Me too.
Resolution there on page, it's tab two, should be tab two, same thing there. So under that second section says, where is the Board of County Commission over to county? If I determine it's necessary and advisable to issue not to exceed five million one hundred ten thousand aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds for the purpose of, here's where it gets to providing funds for the construction, renovation, and equipping of a nursing home facility of the county, and then payment of legal, fiscal, administrative, architectural, engineering costs, instant there too, and then reimbursement for prior expenditures for foregoing costs, so if there were any other expenditures already incurred, then those could have been picked up as well, reimbursed for those, and then cost of issuance and settlement of bonds authorized herein. And so primarily, it's for the purpose of providing funds for construction, renovation, and equipping of a nursing home facility of the county.
Which means, in essence, that we've got to spend it on, or help, have to, which, uh, that's our plan anyway originally. So where we are now then is that we need to decide to move on, probably, because of the, of the reimbursement, it's gonna be pretty, starts with, did you say when we start, had to start paying back the interest?
Your, uh, your debt service, I've got those schedules for you all to look at as well, but your debt service, I believe you've got payment maybe that you've already made. Let's see, first payment of interest was October one seventeen, thirty-nine thousand, I hand these out. The next payment would be April one of eighteen, which you made, so a hundred and fifteen thousand, you've already paid on the debt service, a hundred and fifteen thousand, thirteen dollars and two cents. The larger payments come and due, you're gonna have a seventy-five thousand dollar one coming due October one, which you just made, and then a hundred and forty-five thousand, principal plus seventy-five thousand, two eighty-one twenty-five on April one of nineteen, so I'll be happy to hand these out. These are the schedules, bars the repayment of the debt, for anyone who'd like to see a copy of those. Jennifer in Charlotte?
I've got one.
You've got one, okay. So I've got it broken down by payment date on the first two pages, and then you'll see behind that is the, um, is the budget year. Looks like we got blank pages in there, I apologize, it was two-sided and I nearly ran it incorrectly. But first two, page one, page two are the, by payment date, and then page three shows it by budget year, so if you wanted to see a budget year basis. A little further into it, page three. So the big thing is you've got, you know, you've already got some lines for the other work that's already been done. I think that's working well for the nursing home, and then you've got this additional amount of three hundred thousand for this budget year, for the two thousand and eighteen budget year, so you're gonna have that three hundred thousand. I figured total for the year about five hundred and fifty thousand between the bonds that you've already issued and the bonds you have with these in two thousand seventeen, is what we could be paying. The interest rate on this was a two point eight zero, or a two point eight one percent bond yield, true interest cost of two point nine.
Which is really good.
That's real good, and I, I will tell you, the rates have moved up some here in the last couple of weeks. Federal Reserve's moved rates up, so that means if you couldn't issue bonds like this and give this kind of rate right now, you'd probably look at a three point four thirty, much more expensive than what you did when you issued originally.
We'll give you the money for anything else, we've got it all, so we just, looks like the neighbors are gonna have to take money and let it go as far as it goes, and stop, more or less, if they're saying. I don't see no other option, we also have no other option, tip on. It's the will of the group, or, since the resolution reads the way it does.
I will say, when the bonds were originally issued, they were issued with the repayment being from the additional revenue generated from the improvements you were gonna make.
Right.
And so the existing revenues of the nursing home will probably not pay for the debt service on the new project that you have now.
That's what I've been saying.
So the existing just doesn't produce enough revenue, you'd have to do some improvements to get the additional revenue to pay the debt.
Now that was part of the borrowing tool, so.
Yeah, when we originally issued the bonds, we looked at, if y'all remember, I think everyone, I recognize everybody on, we looked at what's your existing revenue, and then what is the additional to be produced by the improvements, and those, those additional revenues would satisfy the new debt and making those payments, and you wouldn't have to necessarily go into your reserves. Right now, I'm not sure, you know, from what I understand, you all have looked at some options and maybe bid it, and you're finding that construction costs have been up.
Four hundred sixty dollars a square feet, foot.
That's what I'm hearing, you know, I'm hearing a lot of places, right now with the hurricane damage on South Carolina, it's gonna be worse, lumber costs are gonna be going up, and that's gonna be years in making up trying to get that resolved, but I, I tell you.
We're gonna have to spend it though, you know, we're gonna have to use the money and go as far as we can.
We're gonna have to improve this thing in order to get our revenue.
Well, well, I mean, it's not gonna go very far, if it's still at four hundred sixty-five dollars per foot, you're not gonna build much, if that happens.
I'll build eight or ten rooms.
But that's, but that's.
Be it.
Be it, but I mean, that's what we're gonna have to do it, we ain't got no much options, or do y'all see, I don't see any options, y'all.
No, I don't, I mean, being honest.
We just need to take a look at it again and see what we can do with what money we've got left, the way it looks, and repairs. We need to make sure, you know, try to get it in within a two-year project too, and we don't wanna drag it out, if we can. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, what, what he just told us, you know, where we're at, even if we try to rebid it, I don't know.
I know this is a work session, but what about the idea of us then to do it in phases?
Well, that's what, that's what we're starting, is, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we take this money we got left and go as far.
Then what we can.
Yeah, go as far as we can, and then, then we'll have to sit and see what would happen, you know, I think is all we can do. I, I hate the fact that we'll have, probably have to rebid it, we'll have to rebid it again. I think we will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not gonna.
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't need to do it too quick.
Right, right.
I mean, since we've done bid it three times.
But we're gonna have to, and then we're just gonna have to scale it out.
We'll have to get somebody in, see about how far it could go, and how many rooms we can, if we're.
Exactly.
It could be eighty, it could be ten, it might be twelve, I don't know.
What are some companies you work with and design?
I don't get as, I don't get involved.
There was a guy last time.
I will say.
He had last time. Midstates had, there was two, then that's some, there wasn't one bid till last time.
Last time was at Albert Ward.
Yep, that is that guy.
Angelus Diamond was the construction company.
Yeah.
Go ahead, what would you start telling us?
I will say, I'm seeing construction costs rise in other projects, it's not uncommon, okay. I do a lot around middle Tennessee, but also do areas of rural around Tennessee, and what's happening in the school projects, there's so many school projects going on right now, those, the, uh, the larger, you know, Skanska and some of the great big companies are doing those, but their high school now is running anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred million percent on that.
How big of a school?
They're nearly two thousand students.
Okay, so you're talking.
Big schools, middle schools in the forty million dollar range, elementarys in the twenty-five million dollar range, twenty-five, thirty-five.
Monterey High School is fifty-five million, who built that monitor?
Yeah, and we financed that, right, near Jamestown.
Of course, another thing's hurting us too, is that it's a health, it's a health facility too, and that makes it much higher cost.
It is a lot higher.
Some of the other bids we've looked at, some of the projects, it's three times one.
Two and a half, at least two and a half, that's higher than other bids.
You're just building a building, you can bid it for about two hundred dollars a square foot, but you can't here, so I assume that's the reason.
Now, you know, I, I think your idea about doing as much as you can, getting the revenues going, paying for your debt service, if you have excess revenues that are generated from those rooms, then you can come along and do some more and add on, do some more at that point, but, uh, but I will say, you're a year into, um, you know, the funds, so you've got about two years left to really basically complete eighty-five percent or more of your spending, so time is ticking.
Yeah, we gotta get it done.
Yeah, and I understand your challenge, and I, I know y'all are trying your best to do what you can on it, so appreciate that.
You know, we didn't, we didn't expect it to come in that high when we started, we, you know, we expected it to be somewhat higher. I mean, the last one was just a hundred and seventy dollars a square foot, you know, just cottage.
Right.
And it just tripled in three years, you know, and so that.
What was the first bed that swallowed out?
Three something.
That was six.
No, the first, oh, it was whole.
Six, four.
Total.
Six, four, wasn't it?
And that was for the whole thing.
Whole thing, yeah.
The second bid was even more than that.
Six one, no, it was down to six one.
What?
And then it went back up to six seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember.
The square foot changed every time I put it.
That's what I was talking about, the square footage, the price of square footage, yeah.
Well, I mean, you know.
That's something about all we can do.
I mean, it, what's gonna happen is that we'll have to tear this part down and then start back a little bit of time, that's all we can do. We'll have to tear this, we'll have to tear this down to start, more, we'll get away around it, so this will have to be done, and then come back with as many beds we can for what money we got, that's all we can do. From what we've got here and what Ashley told us, what we've got our charges in here, and we gotta go buy what that's there. We ain't got any other option. And then we gotta get, we try to get it done within two years.
Eighty-five percent of it, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so that, we'll be pushing it, so I mean, you're like, um.
Did we pay a penalty?
We'll have to rebid it.
If you earn more than you're paying on a borrowing rate, it's complicated, but then you would remit that portion of IRS, so it's basically, at that point, what you earned above and beyond your bonding rate, or two point eight oh.
Okay.
Which, so right now, that's not an issue, but if it were an issue the next year or two, then it could be, you just remit that additional portion.
Okay.
Which we, we get tired of.
Yeah, you run up two percent.
Yeah, it's gonna go up, yeah, it's gonna start going up.
So will y'all be working with the, the people you've already been working with on it, or are you the person else to work with?
Well, I mean.
We'll just have to rebid it, Conny, and then.
Architecturally, she's talking.
Oh, oh.
Because you'll have to change the scope before you rebid it.
Right. I mean, we could probably, somebody, what about Upland, what, they, they're a pretty good company, you've dealt with.
Yeah, I don't know if they're.
Into the healthcare side?
I don't know about in skilled, nursing, I don't know, I mean, I could talk to them and see.
Well, that'd be something to look at, but they're close, you know.
Well, as long as it's not gonna cost us four hundred thousand, like we've already spent.
Yeah, yeah, I don't believe it will, but something to look at, they're right here in our back door, you know.
I left my phone in the vehicle, charged, I had to call right now, I mean.
To see about, giving us a recommendation.
Let me talk to them right now, I'm gonna give them a call.
Cause if we go back with the same ones, we're gonna be, I don't know, we'll be satisfied with them all, you know.
Well, it's really not their fault, construction cost is a.
No, 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 no.
You know, and they.
It may, it may be their fault that they didn't know how much it was up.
Yeah, you would've, you would've thought somebody in that business would be.
But we, we have to decide how much we're gonna spend, I mean, that's another issue, that they didn't really, we didn't really clarify to them, you know. Are we gonna talk about using some of the CD money, what, I mean.
I'm not, I'm gonna leave that there for reserve, we're gonna use what money we've got left, in my opinion.
Will you need the CD money to make the principal payment until?
Not, not at this point, we don't, if we can get it going and get it open within a certain time frame.
Well, we need some advice on how, how far that thing can go, I mean, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, whatever it is.
That's what we're gonna have.
Well, that first deal, they got somebody to estimate it, before we bid it, and that's why we borrowed the money. They got W and O?
Yeah.
And that's what they borrowed money.
Nobody knew it was.
Right. But it was a lot higher than.
And you gotta remember, you gotta tear it down first, yeah, so that's gonna be a cost for off of that.
Well, you gotta take that off, and then how far will it go building it back?
Can I ask for a clarification of why we have two million in a CD account that we might not want to use toward a building fund?
I, I call it the rainy day fund, and that, when times get hard and we're not making the money that we're, that we're anticipating to make, it's there to be, to be used for any type of payment that we need to make, and that's why I always like having it there. I like that with county government, the same way with that, you know, I like keeping it unbalanced, where it can, it pay you up six months to a year worth of, of, of cost, and that's the way I look at the two million dollars, in my opinion. I don't know what the rest will be all, but that's what, the purpose of having it.
In two thousand six, I believe there's a hundred thousand dollars in that account. And so if we were so worried about putting money in, in an account for a rainy day fund, it wasn't important then.
Well, times have changed since then too, I think, I think times are, are not as predictable as they were back then, and so I think that's one of my, my, my thought on it, and I, I can't speak for anybody else, but that's my whole thinking about it, is that, you know, it may come to a point where we may have to use that for, to pay an expenditure sometime, and, uh, you know, and I won't do that, have that money there to do that.
How long has it been since we've put any extra in there?
Been any.
In the.
Well, I'll be quite frank with you, if we're not gonna be able to use it for a CD account, or for the building of fund, why would we wanna put any extra in there?
Well, it ain't grown, I mean, it ain't changed nothing in the last two or three years, anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Except what interest is drawn, I've not seen any increase.
I mean, since two thousand six, we grew it to two, two point four million dollars.
Plus built a new building.
We took part of that out for the cottage cost. We got down to one point eight maybe, and we built it back up to two. Right now, we're one point four in our operating account. I'm not saying drain it dry, but I'm certainly saying.
I wouldn't object to taking some.
That there is a million, a million and a half dollars that we could use out of that account to get a facility that we need.
I'd hate to go more than a million out of it. I'd touch a little.
And we're just asking to not just shut it down, you know, if it gets to the point to where, if we do get to do the smaller scale project, and we're five hundred thousand to a million short of getting what we need and what is good for this community, that you all would consider it. And we, we don't look to be.
I'd say to how much?
Well, I mean, I would be comfortable with a million, and then add it back as we can.
That's my thinking, is I'd want at least a million left in there, at least a million.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be seven million dollars in debt by the time we build the money we borrowed.
But we are revenue producing.
Yeah, but you spend a lot too.
But we, we make a lot.
The last two years, you've not put any money into, into the account to make it better, you just barely broke even last year.
But we've been paying on the cottage bond.
I understand that, I understand that, but that means there's no extra money, in my opinion.
Twenty seven, twenty seventeen, our operating income was four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Twenty eighteen, so far, our revenues, nine point six million dollars, and you can take all of these audited financials, and you can see increase in revenue every year.
We spend it too.
Of course, as you, as your business grows.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not putting any reserve anywhere, it's, it's going out the doors fast, it comes in, from what I saw in the budget this past year.
We're paying a bond payment on the cottage, and we haven't had to get into our reserve.
Right, and that's the reason why I'm saying we need to keep a reserve, because you're, you're paying out on this other one over here, on the bond payment. Oh, we're gonna add more money to the bond payment now.
We've almost paid one point nine million dollars on the cottage, and we've paid out all these architectural fees.
Yeah, yeah.
And we've still not had to get into our rainy day fund.
I don't think we're touching it either.
You know, it's, you know, you're not gonna add five point one more million to it.
Well, we're setting your contract loss costs in, because you're not gonna be able to get a project for four point six million dollars. You can't build eight beds, because there's, there's more issue than just the construction cost. When you staff at eight beds, that's not financially feasible either. And there's other things you have to think about when you're saying you want to build smaller. You gotta think about, do we have a kitchen in this area, depending on the number of, of patients that we have? How many people, is it cost effective to staff there? Patient care ratio matters. There's more to take into account than let's build eight beds and, or do the four million or whatever.
I said, whatever we can afford to build.
What I'm saying is, don't be so close-minded.
Ain't nobody being.
If we could not get into our CD account, if we need to.
We, we have more to look at just here, and we, and we gotta protect the county as well as anywhere else, and we're gonna, I'm gonna do that from my standpoint. You know, I'm not gonna put the county out there on a limb and not knowing whether or not we're gonna make the payments and all that. That, that, that concerns me, and I've told you that from the start, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just telling you how.
I'm not trying to be argumentative either, I just know that.
I'm not gonna judge.
Financial facts are here that we can afford it. We have not had to have any money from the county, correct?
Not yet.
I gotta hold Upland, Kim Chamberlain is over Upland, he said they just got done with Pleasant Hill, I think, in Cumberland County, they just redone it, and it was the original building, they just redone it, so they would be interested, but they said, because of the law about architects, they couldn't come in unless the other bunch was pulling out. I mean, if there's a contract saying the other architect is involved, they couldn't come in and do anything about it, but they do, do nursing homes and nursing facilities, so if something happens and needed somebody, I mean, I think they.
I know their fees have been very reasonable for us.
Yeah.
I don't, you know.
Do we, are we still on the contract?
Is it like the six percent of the project cost, or what is it?
Didn't we have like four?
Four.
About four, I don't think you'll see that in healthcare, I, I don't, I don't.
Well, it may be more in healthcare, there may be more things involved, but, uh.
Are we still on the contract with the other architect bunch?
Well, we've not terminated it.
I mean, did we have a date on it?
I don't know.
You don't know whether we gotta sign a date or on a contract or not?
I don't sign the contract with the architect firm.
Who signs it on there? Who signs?
That's the board.
You sign a contract for that?
For an architect.
Yeah. Where's that at?
Well, something we can, we can definitely find out the answer to that, I mean, that's not an issue.
I can probably find out.
It's not something we're gonna decide tonight, right?
I can probably find out from Cumberland County too, maybe what percent it was of that. Cause that facility that says been built, probably by the time this one was, that never been redone, and they redone it.
They demolished it and redone it, or?
I, I didn't ask that part, uh, but he said they did completely redo the whole.
And you might ask them, on average, what their rates are for the facility like this.
I don't think we need to go there, build anything till next year sometime, we can't wait that long, though, that's a problem.
We got two years for it.
We can't.
To have, to see.
Well, I mean, but from working with them on other things, I mean, if you started today, it would be sixty to ninety days before you had building plans ready to bid it.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, you know, from what we've worked with them, um.
Yeah, we, we can, we gotta make a move, I mean, we can't, we can't wait, you know, we gotta do something with the money.
Sound like they're of this area and.
They are, they just done the Van Buren County building, and they done the Cumberland County building, plus the nursing home there, and we've been working with them, and they've done the schools here, and they've done several tech, they're working redoing the library tech, and a lot of buildings at tech, they're the ones that's doing all of that, so they are.
Yeah, they probably have a vested interest in it, right, in this area, cause they, they operate out here.
They do, they do.
You're right.
I think when we redone the schools, the last time, they were the ones that done all of that, also.
That's important, yeah.
Well, it's the will of the group, I've said my piece, so, uh, it's whatever y'all wanna do.
But if y'all were interested, I, y'all could get them.
We'll have to find out.
We'll have to find out what kind of contract we got.
Yeah.
Do we have a copy of that?
That, that might be something to find out Wednesday before we have the budget meeting.
I've got mine at home.
Cause they will be there after the budget meeting Wednesday, so we could ask that.
I booked.
If we find out about the contract before Wednesday, but it's, I guess he said that's the slave of the contract, uh, architect and all. I mean, I said.
And then you not seen what that out is.
Yeah.
Six thirty.
Yeah.
Five thirty. Donna, do you have any more questions?
No, I don't have no more questions.
Frank, you think anymore? No, it's like, we need to mull this over.
But you see your dilemma, you see, and we don't have no whittling from what you just told us, we've, we've got.
And we're gonna do something.
We gotta lean forward.
Right, right.
But we may have to spend part of the, what we have in money.
You got plenty in there to move forward and get it done.
We may have to spend something about all of it.
No, I wouldn't spend all of it.
I said, it's the will of the committee, that's, I'll, I'll go on whatever.
Well, I just, I just, you know, I mean, dealing with H F R designs.
But I just, uh.
Um, and, and you all may not be happy with their services, and I totally understand that, but we have paid out a lot of money for them to look over every, the scope of project, the, they know this building in and out, you know.
Well, I think we're already finished.
We've got our fees pretty much paid.
Yeah.
So if there's any changes, would they?
There would be a few more fees, yes, but I, I, I just don't want us to end up spending another five hundred thousand.
That's right.
Going with a new architect firm.
I don't think we should.
Well, you know.
But we're not, that's a good thing to keep in mind, if we ever have anything else that happens, uh, but I think that we should.
Cause if we're not gonna touch our two million, that's gonna eat five hundred more thousand out of our.
Talk to some contractors or something.
Four point six.
Get a little more information for ourselves, and then say, hell, let's handle it.
Well, you know, we need to make sure they, they, they keep us informed, too.
The principal payments.
No changes without our knowledge.
The, the fact that you're continuing your principal payments, because we can't change those gates that they do.
Exactly.
And the revenue's not coming, so you're gonna have to continue making those principal payments.
And they, they did tell me too, they thought right now, building prices are higher, are higher than they have been, but they think the first year, that will worry, that it won't be as much, so.
You think it's gonna go down?
Yes.
I don't know. Even with all the devastation, that's what we were just talking about, the hurricane, he was, while you was outside, he was, was you any when he was talking about schools, how much it cost?
No.
You know, a, a two thousand student facility was what, eighty million?
High school, seventy-five and a hundred.
Seventy-five hundred million.
Wilson County building one in Mount June.
We were looking at one here in Greedland, it was forty something million, of course, you gotta do everything the high schools got, but, you know, Development District, we just started a building, they come in a hundred and seventy a square foot, uh, of course, I know that's different to a nursing facility, but, uh.
I wonder if there's any C, C D B G grant money out there that didn't apply for the nursing home through that, or something, I don't think so.
Not in C D B G.
Not in that, is there any of that through the Development District that we could look at to help, something out? That wouldn't really cost us anything.
Well, they don't really tailor toward counties, cause there's not many counties that have a nursing home. Most of them are private-run, and they don't do grants to private, so, uh.
Right.
A community facility that I've done a storm shelter, maybe, but it would be hard to, you'd have to have something underground, and I don't know.
I just, I couldn't remember what the requirements were under that, under that program, cause a lot of times, they, you know, you get it for certain things.
Well, ambulance and fire, and water and sewer, and then housing ground, we got, sort of, building houses.
So are you using CD money to make the principal payments?
Yeah, no, that may be.
No?
Probably would, yeah, if, uh.
It looks like.
Right, that might be something.
Do what?
I was asking if they make, um, if they use the CD money to make the principal payments.
No, we've not done that yet.
No.
No, we, we kept it there for a reserve.
If we took a million, that might be about five and a half, close to five and a half million.
So where, where's the other money coming from?
Forty four point nine right now, but we got, and he, and of course, this, this is based on fee revenue too, this, this money.
Yeah, but I see where that'll come from when it comes in, but, but in the interim, what, we're.
It's coming out of our operating cost.
Right. That's the reason why we gotta be approval.
Okay, the next big payment will be two hundred and twenty thousand in April one of nineteen.
Of nineteen. Now, nineteen, Florida and Rhode Island.
Two twenty would that be the?
In addition to your other debt service.
Would two thousand twenty be when the?
How much is that?
Paying, paying the star.
No, we're just on that in nineteen.
Other debt service.
Together. Let's see, here's what this folks are gonna be.
About five hundred and fifty three thousand, so, so, yeah, so about another two hundred and forty thousand on the other issue.
So we're looking at.
Five hundred and fifty three thousand for the budget year of nineteen.
Right.
So.
We're in, aren't we?
Yeah.
That's a big payment. What's on there? We've kind of got a question. Near bind here, financially, we're not careful.
We're gonna be in a bigger bind if we have to pay the principal payment without getting any revenues.
Well, I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying, you know, we're looking at five hundred and something thousand dollars, and we've not got it all done. You know, you gotta just have them started. We just got one thing done, and here we got a half a million dollars to pay. And that ain't gonna change, that's gonna keep going up.
That, that was as long as we could get the principal payment to, to start, so we, we didn't have.
Yeah. Yeah, so really, you're looking for this new project to generate about three hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
Net three hundred thousand a year from the new project.
That's for the total size of what they were looking at, so it won't be that much if it cuts back, so.
Right, that's level, so that'll be at that three hundred. So as your revenues grow, that's still gonna be three hundred thousand, so that would be.
That's what I say, see, we based it on, what was it, thirty beds, fifteen, eight, twenty beds?
But we did a very conservative with Ashley, because what we did is looked at our revenues each year. And so we decided to go very conservative, because we have done well financially, that we added six, if we could just have six more private paid rooms, Medicare skilled patients, that that would cover the cost.
Well, it is a Medicare rate. Have you ever done it yet?
Our Medicare, there's fifty.
What was that rate we've been waiting on?
Our Medicare rates, there's fifty three different rates.
What rate are you waiting on?
But our ten care rate.
You were waiting here in October. Was that the Medicaid or what was that?
That, we talked about that in July.
That was V A, wasn't it?
The Medicaid rate went up in July. Yes, normally it, it does come in October.
One of the rates we're waiting, she gonna tell us, it's estimated.
No, we shared that in July.
The old way with ten care, we would not know until October what our rate was gonna be retroactive to July, but there's a new re, ten care reimbursement system that we've been talking about that focuses on
Yeah.
new construction.
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement, so we did actually get that in July, and it's two twenty seven fourteen.
All right. I know it's just work session, but with this, with eight million dollars, because Ron was on, helping on the cottage, sat down with architects about.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, you know, well, when they.
Yeah, that was on the cottage, yeah.
Yeah. But I'm saying, you know.
On the cottage.
Yeah.
They called me.
Have experience.
That's, that's why I said, you had, you, they got the experience on the cottage, you know, you sat down and said, you know, we don't need a, if we can, if we can get by with a five hundred dollar door, we don't have to buy another door, huh? You know.
I mean, yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
Day's the fourth, we got a run in the paper two weeks, so it looks like the seventeenth or the nineteenth. The eighteenth, we've got already scheduled here, so I guess we could do it then. That's the quickest we can get it done for another new, to move forward or whatever, so.
We just did it our regular monthly.
For the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah. That's the quickest we can do it. I wish we could do it quicker, but we can't.
What is it we're doing then?
To move on with this project, we're gonna have to get it done by the eighteenth, so we can move on.
So what, what do you need here on the eighteenth?
Yeah, we already here on the eighteenth, that's what I said.
But what do you need? What do, what do I need to have?
She asked, what do you need?
Well, what we need to know is, I guess we need to know whether or not, uh, this group's gonna stay with us, and we need to know about the contract, if there's any outs on it, or if we wanna change or anything like that, so it's whatever that they wanna do. I, I've had the floor too much.
I think probably one of them, they, I think they would be here if they could.
I, obviously, I think so too.
I think the one we've used, one of the, some, some of them, one of them ought to be here.
What's his name?
What's his name?
From H F R Designs?
Yeah.
Yes, Joey or, or Mike?
Joey, yeah.
So, so let me ask you this about the H F R Design. So they, they estimated the cost, and it wasn't nothing close to that when it was bid, correct?
They got an estimate from a local company.
But it wasn't anywhere close.
No, but it was, it was, when we started this, was two years ago, when construction costs were not.
So their estimate was two years ago, then we just bid it here lately, is what you're.
No, 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 we bid it last year. We've been going, we've, well, actually, we bid it three times.
December.
I know where he's going with this.
But what I'm wondering about is, like, nothing against them, but the other company I talked about is bidding several projects and estimating to come in what they said it was going to, so I just wonder what that company's track record of estimating and if it actually come into that, that cost, I mean.
I agree, and the.
Well, I can sure get Mike Nasser to call you and talk to you about that. He would be happy to, um.
But we've, like Jennifer was saying, we've paid out in architect fees for between four and five hundred thousand dollars, so if we start all over with upland.
Yeah, I mean.
Nobody's saying I'm switching. I'm just talking about the quickest way to go.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
I understand that point too.
Actually, they don't have everything drawn.
The, uh, but the same thing, the Development District, we started two years ago on our building, and they estimated it, and they come in right at what they said it was going to, so.
How many beds did we, I mean, how many beds did we have in that last bid? Twenty?
Fifteen.
Yes, twenty.
It was twenty.
Twenty.
I thought we cut, cut the bed.
So you said, you said you needed six steel.
That would cover the cost. No, six would not be feasible to deal.
No, I'm not, but you need six.
We need six more Medicare patients here in this building for their sixty five days a year.
Which we can do that with what we got, and the demolition, we'll tell you. We'll be able to do that with no plan.
And we need the, the new rehab room. I mean, that was what this whole focus was about, was to really have that to attract patients.
We have, when you make your money, we have in and out, in and out.
That's the added benefit that you're gonna be able to feel.
Right, yeah.
Y'all wanna have one eighteenth then?
Got to.
Where we go wrong, it's on eighteen.
We're mean, but I'm saying, we gotta, yeah, but we gotta have all the people here, the architect people, or just the one guy, whoever.
I didn't even look back at it.
Whoever makes the decision. Whatever his name was. One of them, he did talk our language, the other, one didn't. He was more into the.
There's one just come on down to the middle of the stream.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Kinda took over.
Yeah, he did talk our language.
I appreciate that.
The other one didn't.
Are you okay? You're losing weight.
Little bit, I'm fine.
Okay. I always ask.
Do you ever sit in on any of those, uh, meetings like that with architecture, or anything?
I can, and I'd be happy to.
I mean, you got a feel for it, you know, and.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
And we wanna do the best we can do with what money we got.
That's right.
You're our bank, so, our banker more or less, so I would, would feel more comfortable if you were here.
I'd be happy to come up on the eighteenth.
To help guide us, and I mean, how do y'all feel about that?
That'd be fun.
Jennifer, what would you say? I, I just need clarification of who is it you need here on the eighteenth to meet H F R Designs?
Joey, with H F R Design, Joey. Joey, he's the one who has worked on it, right?
Yes.
The most. He was the younger, well, I don't know.
The one. One of the glasses.
Yeah, with the one with the glasses.
I don't think.
Yeah, one of us.
He didn't come on to it for six months.
He didn't talk our language. That's the one I've talked about.
You know, when we done the cottage, what percentage it was architect fees on that?
It was six then.
And now this is ten or more.
No, it was six then.
But I mean, if we've done, paid them five hundred, that's five million dollar project, that's ten percent.
Yeah, we done went over that.
It's, it's all the changes. We had, you know, there was lang, they, we went from thirty five beds to start with when we first started, we talked about thirty five.
And then we redone it, had them to take out and redo again. Two times, right?
And every time we rebid, it just went up.
Going higher every time.
You ever seen that? You ever seen that happen?
Not when you, when you draw.
Going down, yeah.
But it's more in price higher.
But the cost was increasing.
It may be the, maybe the construction.
But they remember when I'm about fifteen percent this year, I'd heard.
Of course.
You remember last time?
But at some point, you gotta say, you know, you're the architect, you work with these contractors, here's how much we got available.
That's the problem. We never give them what we got available.
This next time, be higher too.
That's the problem. They need to know what we are willing to spend before they can design what we wanna build.
I thought we, we've done that. We, we told them, we told them we had five point one million dollars to spend.
Well, that was told when, when we first started.
When we was in the.
When we was in the.
Did we not tell them?
Captain figure in that.
Yeah, I mean, we've done that.
In the kitchen, when, when we came to that meeting to start with, when they had the plans, that was told.
Yeah, we've done that, you know, here we.
But I, that's why I wanted, did they do construction plans every time it changed before it was bid?
Two, two different changes.
But they done, but did they do two sets of construction total plans?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And then we went through the process before we had to change the language for the value engineering, cause we voted to do that.
Value engineer, yeah.
Well, that's probably worth an extra cost, because every time they did a set of construction plans, completely to get it bid correctly would be high, so two times.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, if we'd have left it at that one, then we wouldn't have been out so much money. I mean, the six percent, but.
I sure you wanted to hear the change.
They're making money out of it.
Okay.
Well, we can tell them eighteen.
Eighteen, five o'clock, we'll be on people.
But the last time, how much did come in?
Six point seven.
And you were figuring four point something?
Well, we.
I mean, I mean, that's what.
We got four point nine. That was twenty beds, six point seven.
But I would say you need to see if they change them again, if it's gonna be another three hundred thousand to change them again, it'd almost be better to go with the full size of it and use some of that extra money than it would to pay three hundred thousand dollars and then not know if the price comes in higher again, so, you know.
Yeah, so twenty beds, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a room, right?
That's a lot of room. See, the problem.
Then what are your thoughts on, uh, uh, that ten million dollar CD? What are your thoughts on that?
I would say they keep some of it, I mean, I mean, a little of it would be really good.
Our biggest cost, it's hurting us, is we got terrorists building that. And that's going, that's a big cost.
Yeah, and demolition.
And the landscaping and those.
Right, and then we gotta do.
We can take the landscaping out, landscaping in.
But the, the thing I would look at that would.
Just get all this out here, being dug out and redone.
I mean, you have to build up the.
I know, but I'm saying, that's what, that's a lot of cost.
We take the wall.
You have to retain the wall. I mean, that's part of it, you have.
You're talking about the rock, probably.
But the thing about the million dollars or whatever you use of it, it costs more to borrow money than you're making off that interest, so it's, you know, that's smart money to use money that you've got drawing two percent instead of paying three percent to borrow more money. Cause we could borrow later if we had to, to, if you needed to do that million back, maybe, uh, you know, but it's still, I don't think you would need that.
What's the, when we get done, we, we gonna owe how much on our debt reserve? We're gonna owe seven, what, what, seven point one million, seven point two million?
For all the principal from the prior issue.
For everything we got, yes. Where we stand when we get done.
Is it this number, the seven point two?
That's what I was saying.
That's principal and interest. You could, you could actually, uh, that ten, you reinfinis it to a lower interest call, or pay it off in that ten year.
But if rates are higher, you, you wouldn't want to do that.
Right, that's right. You can leave it out there. It's at your option. Nobody's gonna come to you.
But what we got to borrow and what we owe, where, where do we stand?
You'll have, uh, as of, as of June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, your prior bond issue was, uh, let's see here. Three point three three five on the prior issue, and then you'll have.
That five point one.
Five point one, so three point three three five, five point one, eight point four.
That was June thirtieth seventeen.
Yeah, right, yeah.
As of seventeen.
So it's a year ago.
Yeah, so we're down, we're down on the cottage.
We were at probably seven million.
Around, around eight million.
Yeah.
One thing that's different now, anyway, was, I've been looking back through four minutes, when they started, the county paid, the county borrowed, the county paid the payments instead of nursing home paying it.
Right.
You know, you all were paying the payments on the cottage and everything through revenue, and when it first started, the county paid in the sixties when they first done the nursing home. The county had to borrow, the county had to pay, so it's a whole different, oh, no, I'm coming. So it's a lot different. Okay, let me ask you this, worst case scenario, Ashley, if, five years from now, there, you know, Medicare tanks or whatever, and we, it's where the county has to put in money and decided, hey, we wanted to sell the nursing home or something. If we've got a, a bond that you can't pay off, that would that work?
You would just escrow the money to pay it.
And then you pay it, okay. But I mean, that's where, we don't wanna go there, but I'm just saying, I just wondered if it was, you know, to happen where we had to, cause I mean, if we had to come up with a million dollars all at once, we'd have to do something, I mean.
Right. Well, let me, let me ask a question.